I will call the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Karen, roll call, please.
Paul.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Troika.
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to my leg of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion for the agenda as received or proposed as amended.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Public comments, do we have any member, any citizens, any individuals in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment for anything that is not on the agenda? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? All right. Item number three, years of service awards. Do we have any?
Yes, I don't have any experience on this part.
Oh, you're good.
We have five.
Okay. Did you just read them?
We have Lori Rodinghouse.
And how many years' experience?
Hold on.
Twenty-five years with Public Health. Thank you.
Good thing.
We have Jason Hines with the Sheriff's Department, thirty years. Nate Neff, Sheriff, thirty years.
Go ahead, please. Yeah, they come forward when they're here. So she's saying she's not familiar with that part.
I am not familiar with this process.
Roll call.
It's great. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah. Thank you. You'll have to say, shake your hands, thirty years.
Jason Toronas with the Sheriff's Office, thirty years. Todd Newgren, the Sheriff's Office, twenty-five years.
All right. And we have the board's meeting, you won't let me do more?
You want to speak about your service?
It's just, it's been an honor. It's hard to believe it's been thirty years and I'm looking forward to several more yet. You're not done with me yet.
We appreciate the time and commitment of all that are being recognized. Item number four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is one million, twenty-one thousand, five hundred, twenty-four dollars and one cent. And the Sheriff's Sixty Forty Fund, we're paying forty thousand, two hundred, thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. That's high this week because we are paying for the first half of a social worker in the jail, the contract, for forty thousand dollars with the Department of Correctional Services. We do have a lot of large payments. That's how we got to the million dollars. Some of them are consolidated dispatch, they're paying Raycom radio maintenance for two hundred thousand, and their ICAP annual insurance premium for twenty-five thousand, thirty-two dollars. The E nine one one commission is also paying Raycom both for maintenance and for hardware upgrade. That total is two hundred, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred, thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And they are also paying their ICAP premium for forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Local option sales tax fund, we are paying Boulder contracting for bridge patching for a hundred and forty-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And I think there's some couple more things. We are also paying Blacktop Service Company for our seal coating project for a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred, seven dollars and eleven cents. Those are most of the large payments today. Lots going on, busy time in the summer.
Questions or comments? This is a resolution, so roll call, please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Troika.
Yes.
Item number five, receive project updates from the department heads, elected officials.
You love that.
All right. Well, I know I like to do like a summer update of, you know, how things are going with the IRVM program. This summer, we were able to acquire our spray truck this past fiscal year and the whole thing built. This is just some photos of what it looks like, the finished product. It's been quite a useful tool so far, as I'll explain here in the next few slides. So these are just some photos of it and what it all looks like and what it's produced so far. Here is just a map, our GIS map of the county. The green was what was sprayed last year through six months of spraying, April to early October, and the blue is what we've covered so far this year. This is just a side-by-side comparison. Everything is in feet, which I've converted. We haven't worked the bugs out yet. This is a pretty new application for us. So just a side-by-side comparison of basically what we've done so far per month, and this is a live, ongoing update. So it helps keep track of how many miles, how many gallons that we sprayed. So far, twenty-three versus twenty-four. Twenty-three, for six months, we sprayed five hundred and thirty miles of roadways, about roughly sixteen thousand, five hundred gallons of mixed chemical. In twenty-four, over just four months, we sprayed five hundred and eleven miles and a total of seventeen thousand, three hundred gallons. If we go back to this, you can kind of see the comparison for how many miles, how many gallons we've pretty much, with this new spray truck, we've increased our productivity by about a month and a half to two months worth of time to be able to, from last year, using a hundred-gallon spray tank truck to something that I can just be out and about all every day and not have to come back in for water or chemicals.
How many gallons does this truck hold?
Roughly six hundred gallons. Yep. So all in all, I would say everything's going well. We're, we have, I would say, really met our goal, about half the county, and we're really close to that. So, and I still have about a month and a half to go, so we'll, we're just going to keep pushing and hope for favorable weather. I would say as things progress, when we get more data, we'll be able to see, you know, what we can do and with our management within the right-of-way. And I'd also like to say that there's been a lot of meetings with the paper and other organizations interested in the IRVM program and native purries within the county and roadside. So I would say this program's catching traction and it's been really nice to share what we do as a county and how we just manage our road sides for noxious weeds and trees and also implementation of the native purries within the right-of-way, so.
All right. Any questions for Griffin? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Look forward to, I guess, at the end of the season then, seeing what those comparisons are.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, we'll see how far we can get and hopefully the weather stays the way it's been. So even as wet as it's been, we still are at the point we're at.
Yeah, that's good progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? Gabby?
Yes. Good morning, Board. Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator. I just wanted to give an update on the video showcase project. I sent an email that the CGI representatives will be here August twelfth. That's more of an FYI. I sent it for department heads as well. You're welcome to attend. They're basically here for a week to try to sell sponsorships for the videos. The, I don't know if you remember, but when we showed the sample videos, they all had logos around them. That was businesses from those areas that sponsored the videos. That's what they're here to do. The video shooting, we completed that July twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. They sent a videographer from Minnesota and we went to Hudson, Evansdale, Elk Run, the Washburn-Gilbertville area, LaPorte City, Dunkerton, Waterloo, and Cedar Falls in those two days. So they were two very long days, but got a lot of good footage. And they did share some of the raw footage of our county parks so that we have those and we'll be able to like utilize those drone videos for ourselves. So that was good. And then just an update on branding, we've started the process on the vehicle branding and I'm hoping to have a good vendor to work with by next week or the week after to present that to you. Any questions?
Any question? Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Gabby.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? Amanda?
Yes, morning. Anna Fezimer, HR Director. So just to kind of build on what Gabby said, we were looking at our job postings and Anna, our HR generalist, mentioned this is the first time we've gotten to close dispatch, civilian dispatcher roles and detention officer roles in probably like three years. And Nate Neff has been able to hire several people, and I think a lot of that is a testament to our marketing coordinators bringing awareness to Blackhawk County more and making great suggestions to HR as to how we can reposition our job postings and have a bigger impact and in a way that to be a very attractive employer. So that's really exciting that we're actually at a point where we can say, we can close some of these jobs that have been open for so long. They'll likely reopen. They won't be closed for long, but it's great that we're getting a lot of positive feedback from hiring managers in areas that have had a lot of turnover or have struggled in the past trying to fill those vacancies with qualified, talented employees and I think or candidates. And I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. Obviously, there's things that have happened here locally with companies like John Deere and some of their reduction in layoff in their workforce, but also the compensation study and us making sure that we have competitive wages also adds to that success, I believe. So just a kind of fun update that we still have openings and vacancies in deputy sheriff quite a bit, and seeing all of these thirty-year, twenty-five-year service awards means that more will likely be coming with vacancies. Public health nurse is still kind of a continuous opening that we're looking into, and attorney. And then, like I said, we'll likely be having dispatch and detention officer again, but it's kind of nice to be able to actually remove a posting because we have a lot of great candidates that are coming through. So that's just one update there. And then also, we'll be, you'll be hearing some information from HR about partnering with Cedar Falls Utilities to offer a management training on September ninth. We're actually going to be using a attorney that's very well-known in our arena of HR. He's a labor attorney out of Ohio, and many of the IPH groups, like other cities and counties in Iowa, have utilized his experience and would kind of share his costs to come here and provide excellent training for managers. And I'm really looking forward to that. So you'll be hearing information and Adra Heineman, who formerly was a HR director here, she and I are partnering to kind of provide that and share those expenses so that our managers can get top-notch training. So September ninth, for any department heads in the room, that will be coming out there. And I think that's really all I had. Any questions though regarding recruit? Oh, one last thing I did want to mention. I've also been working with Gabby and kind of a proposal that will be bringing to the board with working with KWWL to kind of further enhance our reach with the job applicant pool. And so I've been talking to key departments that have a lot of, I would just say that have had historically had challenges filling roles, everything from in conservation, ranger positions, to our roads department with labor equipment operators, engineers, tech aides, public health nurses, law enforcement dispatch, attorneys, and possibly looking at some of their salary savings or their vacancy money using towards this effort. So I will be kind of pitching that to all of them. I think it's a good way to use those dollars that are unused throughout the year, but also want to be mindful of how that kind of fits in their budget because it's not cheap to be able to utilize a media platform like KWWL and a lot of their outlets that they can expand our reach. So that will come to the board before we ever, you know, sign off on anything, or it would be the board's decision to sign off on that. But I just want to give you a heads up, we've been looking at that to kind of continue to build the momentum that Gabby has generated over the past several months. And that's how we're kind of budgeting for it, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Any questions about that? Or I know you'll receive the proposal, but I first got to get the okay of several people behind me because it's their budget, not mine. I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's what we've been working on, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
You mentioned something about the United Way campaign.
Oh, yes.
As far as being, as long as you're sharing good news.
As long as I'm sharing good news, yes. We made the top fifty, Blackhawk County, our campaign last year of giving and United Way. We were recognized as a top fifty contributor, and we were recognized last week and had a photo taken by Nicole Dearberg of United Way, and we were actually number thirty-three. So maybe top thirty, but no. But no, that's, that's great. I'm happy to, you know, it's always kind of tough when you're asking, and United Way comes in and they do a great job of explaining what their dollars and where they go to. Proud of our campaign that we were able to contribute to the Cedar Valley when we already, you know, employ so many people that contribute in a way as part of their role, but others felt they could give a little bit extra, and that's wonderful that we got to be recognized for that. So you may see that on their page and see a few familiar faces from that effort. And thank you, you know, to Michelle and Lori and Jen in payroll for helping facilitate that whole thing last year, and we'll be doing it again because it's already about time. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Caitlin?
Morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director. I just have a couple of quick updates, and I think it's probably fitting that I follow Amanda because some of my updates are made possible through recent hires. We are down to two vacancies, which is the lowest number we've been in a long time, so I'm really happy about that. Our deputy director is also our accreditation coordinator. As you know, we received national accreditation from the Public Health Accreditation Board in 2022, and so we're kind of resuming some of those efforts and preparing for reaccreditation, looking at the ten domains that we have to meet and where our gaps are. And we've kind of organized into domain teams and really are trying to engage staff in that process to do kind of gap analysis of where we are in meeting those reaccreditation requirements and seeing what things we need to put into place. One of the gaps that we've identified already is related to employee engagement. So that would be employees input in employee satisfaction, work-life balance, employee recognition, inclusive culture, and providing kind of feedback into policy review and revision and stuff like that. So we do have several internal committees at Public Health that our sixty-ish staff participate in, and I'm working on creating kind of a new opportunity for staff to get involved in an employee engagement process, which I'll work with Amanda on to see if she has other input as well, but that's just something new that's happening with us that I wanted to give you an update on. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in the boardroom? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right. Item number six is approval of the minutes from the July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. We are going to have a hearing. Item number seven is a hearing. It is in regard to an ordinance and a rezone request by Jerry Gallmeyer. Item number eight is the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Troika.
Yes.
Item number nine A is a resolution that the pre-construction agreement between Blackhawk County, Iowa, and the Iowa Department of Transportation for project number STP dash two one eight dash seven, in parentheses, two forty-nine, long dash, two C dash zero seven, for the paving of side road approaches along US two eighteen at an estimated cost of fifty-two thousand dollars, two hundred, sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents to Blackhawk County, which is budgeted for fiscal year 2026. Be approved and direct the chair to sign the same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Kathy? We have a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Kathy?
Yeah. Good morning, Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The Iowa DOT will be resurfacing Highway two eighteen between Waterloo and LaPorte next summer, so that eight or nine miles. They've asked us if we would like to have our gravel road approaches paved, and we, this is what that would cover. I've talked to you about the importance of paving the gravel roads as they intersect with a paved road. It keeps gravel off of the paved road. It's better for traction control in the winter, it's better for us plowing in the winter, so there's a lot of benefits for us doing that. We have been doing that routinely throughout the county, as well as, that is pretty routine for many other counties to do that as well. So I would ask that you approve this agreement and then we will budget for this. This will be paid for with local option sales tax money.
Any questions for Kathy?
Kathy, this is Tom.
Yes.
Did I hear, and correct, you said it's budgeted already in 2026 budget?
We may have put it in the twenty-five budget. I couldn't recall, but in knowing more about the DOT timeline now, it is also, it will also be in the twenty-six budget, so we should have it covered whenever the DOT decides to bill us for it.
Okay, but we don't actually have it budgeted for 2026 yet.
Correct. It may be in twenty-five. I just don't remember, but we think it's probably going to be in a twenty-six item.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. This is a resolution. Roll call, please.
Paul.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Troika.
Yes.
Item nine B is a resolution that the federal agreement between Blackhawk County, Iowa, and the Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT agreement number two dash two four dash eight HBPS dash zero two eight for a county highway bridge program, project BRS dash C zero zero seven, one seven three dash six zero dash zero seven, on Dubuque Road over Tributary to Indian Creek, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Yeah, this work will take place next year, and we need to replace a large culvert on Dubuque Road. This would be the portion between Waterloo and Jessup, and this is a different type of agreement. With this agreement, the DOT agrees to give us federal aid money to do this type of work. So this will ultimately be a hundred percent federal aid money, and we agree to follow all federal guidelines in design, acquisition of real estate, and construction, construction inspection, that type of thing.
All right. Any questions for Kathy? Comments? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Troika.
Yes.
Item ten A is discussion possible board action to approve a rate of twenty-seven dollars per month for the Washburn sanitary sewer system maintenance rate, an increase of six dollars per month effective with the November twenty twenty-four billing cycle, and an increase of four dollars per month to a total fee of thirty-one dollars per month effective with the November twenty twenty-five billing cycle.
Just going to say, I didn't know. Michelle, did you want to do an introduction or do we would like to have his comments first because I was going to say, recognize the speaker?
I think that's the board's wish. We've talked about it quite a bit, so I think you're aware, we're just trying to make sure that revenues equal expenditures and maintain the fund properly.
Okay. All right. Before we have a action, I guess it's appropriate to recognize the speaker. Sir, if you could provide your name and address.
Mike Mush, three oh three First Street in Washburn. I was here a few weeks ago, and I think we all decided that a rate increase was probably needed for the sewer system. My problem back then, my problem is now is the accountability of the money that we have. In your letter that you sent out to inform everybody what was going on, there's a four-hundred and forty thousand dollar project going on right now. The total estimated cost was seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. I was just kind of wondering what, what else are we doing between the four hundred and forty thousand and the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand? The money that's, the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand was coming from ARP money. I have another question of, when we pay, when we write checks, are we distinguishing between the ARP funds and the other money that was already in the account for the normal upkeep? Are they separate accounts? Are there separate pay or does it all comes out of the same thing?
We're definitely tracking the construction project separately. It's all in the Washburn Sewer Fund because we're required to account for it there, but it is definitely tracked in separate activities so that I know how much we're spending.
And then we have to, by the requirements of the ARP money, we've got to.
We have to follow that and, yeah. And we haven't determined how the remaining funds of the seven thirty-five will be spent. As you recall, we just hired an engineering firm last week to help us prioritize the projects that need to be done, and we'll be moving ahead with that shortly.
But we have no idea what other projects. Somewhere, I was in the paper or in the minutes a while back, a fence around the lagoons was something that they were talking about. They're twenty-seven years, they haven't had a fence around the lagoon. I'm not sure why we need that now.
I believe you do have a fence. I hope you have a fence because I believe the Department of DNR requires fencing, so.
Not around all of it, I don't think. Anyway, another thing was backup generators?
Those are potential items on a list that Department of Natural Resources would be involved, whether they would require such a thing. Those are, that's why we're hiring a firm to help us determine what really should be done and needs to be done now. Some larger systems are required to use backup generators for stormwater pumps and sewer pumps, actually. So there's information out there. We're not sure. I don't believe they made it a requirement of the new permit, fortunately, so I don't know whether that will become a requirement, but that was something on a list that was prepared several years ago of potential things that could be done in that system. There are several others as well that would probably be higher priorities.
And that is kind of, I think when the money first came available to us and sewers or and water and sewer was identified as a possibility in Washburn, obviously came to all of our minds of the projects going on out there and what, how this could benefit us to help. And I think it was just really a list of what things are out there, what things should we be looking at, and it was a very preliminary list, and I think, but so that's why I said we need the expertise of others to come in and prioritize for us and show us what the needs are of the area, what we should be doing, and then let us decide what we can afford and spend the funds on with those ARP dollars.
Okay. One more question. We all know how I feel about the money that we pay out to the contract to take care of the system. The contract is a yearly, it renews every two years, I think it is, is coming up renewed in 2025. It automatically renews at the same rates and everything there is now unless somebody objects or brings it up. I just hope that come January or February of next year, when it comes up, if there's any kind of a change, that we look at that real close. Because if the money is, if the money is separate from ARP funds and what we take out of our account, in February, we spent sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars between urban services and Cedar Valley pump in one month. In May, eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, and supposedly, now these aren't ARP money, this is coming out of the fund. In June, seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents to Cedar Valley Pump and Urban Services. I just seems, that's a lot of money coming out. I just hope we. I just hope we keep it better, keep track of what's going out, and when the contract comes new, we don't increase it any more than it already is. So I think it's way too much now, and I'm just concerned about every two years when the contract comes up that we, we don't have enough money, because we started out, when we first started out about the balances, we figured the fiscal year twenty-five, we're going to be a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for an annual fee to keep it up. Well, now we're down to a hundred and twenty thousand. We dropped that by twenty-some thousand dollars, but it seems to me like these numbers keep fluctuating up and down and up and down, so I don't want to, a year from now, have somebody come in and say, I need to increase all these rates again. I think we need to control the cost and be more accountable to the money that's there and how it's getting spent. I question a lot of things about the whole deal when I have Cedar Valley Pump and Urban Services, both have the same address. I kind of question that a little bit. I mean, I just didn't seem quite kosher. I just, I just think that we need to be more careful with the money that we've got there and be a little more accountable of how we spend it. But I, as far as the increase, I think we probably need that now, but we just need to control it in the future.
And your questions are great. I appreciate, we appreciate how you're keeping an eye on how your money is being spent. So, because that's what we all should be doing, so we appreciate that, Mike.
At the same time, I would, I would say that from financial perspective and oversight, I think, probably speak for staff, that, that we recognize Michelle's diligence in checking, double-checking, sometimes to frustration, triple-checking those dollars. And so it is not as if it is blank checks out to services. There is, there is absolutely oversight, but, you know, certainly appreciate the reminder.
I would be happy to address a little bit maybe those bills that we've been receiving. So, and I haven't, I would need a chance to go pull all the invoices to look at them, but in general terms, we do hire Cedar Valley Pump. They rebuild pumps that are no longer working. So when someone places a call to Urban Services to say there's a pump light on, it's not working, Urban Services goes out, they do whatever they can, they may need to pump the pit out, they will determine whether the pump's functioning or not. If it's not, we have a choice. We can either purchase a brand-new pump and have it installed, and that cost has been running at least double the cost of the second option, which is we have a person who knows these pumps and can take the parts out that tend to malfunction and replace them. So we're rebuilding the pump with new parts for approximately half, typically less than half, of the cost of purchasing a new pump. One issue that historically the system has had is there was no way to measure how many hours were on a pump to determine, is this one malfunctioning every, in a short period of time, because then maybe it makes more sense to replace it. One of the functions that we will have with the four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar project that was mentioned, that's the pump panel, control panels, that will have the ability to measure hours of use. So that will help us make sure that we're not fixing the same pump every month or two, Ben does not believe we are, and I, we do track the pump numbers that are rebuilt. I don't, I can't guarantee that, but I do believe Urban Services tries to be very mindful of the funds, and we're trying to only do what needs to be done. I think that was, can't remember if I've missed any questions in there, but I wanted, I thought it would made sense to explain that relationship and what we're doing. And also Cedar Valley Pump tends to only bill quarterly, so you will see a big bill about every three or four months from them. It's just how they do it. So, yeah, at least we're not getting those size bills. It's not a monthly thing with that.
Michelle, this is Tom. How many new pumps do we have on hand?
I would need to check with Urban Services about that. I am not sure.
But there are, there's some on hand, that can back up or reserve.
I, I would like to check with Ben before I answer that. I'm not sure. I have not been out.
Is Urban Services and Cedar Valley Pump, are they the same place?
Well, they're not the same company. They do share an address for certain things. Probably most people here know Cedar Valley Pump, I believe, is owned by Brian Delagardel, who I believe used to actually maintain the Washburn system. I believe that's correct. And Ben Delagardel now is Brian's son. He has a separate company. Urban Services is a separate company that does, that has the maintenance contract, and I probably should clarify a little bit about that maintenance contract as well. The contract does renew every two years. However, if the board doesn't renew it, or we just don't take any action on it, it also continues. There really is not necessarily an end date unless you choose to, and that rate does increase slightly. We've, the contract ties it to inflation, so those costs will rise each year based on inflation, assuming inflation rises. Now, we know we've been in a period where inflation's been high. Hopefully, that's coming down, and that will also help with rates.
And we did handle our last contract with them, really on that basis, too. They extended, we extended kind of the timeline of it because we wanted to review the contract.
The contract had not been updated, I don't believe, since two thousand and one, when we looked at it last year, because I, there were just things that needed to be, I felt like more spelled out about what Urban Services responsibilities are for us, and to make sure that our system stays on the good side of the Iowa DNR, that's important to all of us. So we did, we did redo the contract last year for the first time in that period of time.
No, it seems like, and it seems like in regard to DNR regulations, many communities have been getting jammed up.
Yes.
For lack of a better word. And we haven't had the same issue with Washburn.
Right.
These are specialized ser-, we don't have people beating down our door to provide these services, do we?
No, and I know just from my past experience, it's becoming more difficult to find people with that expertise. We do require that Ben with Urban Services maintain a wastewater license with the Iowa DNR, and you, even if, you do have to study and take tests for that, but you can't just get a license because you've done that. You also have to have experience. And much as we saw with the service certificates we gave out this morning, there is a large group of people that are getting to ages where they're retiring, and it's becoming more and more difficult to find staff that is interested in working in wastewater and interested in getting those licenses. So, yes, we do have to be careful that we keep people in that pipeline.
So an alternative, I'm not, I'm not making this suggestion, maybe we're getting a little off the beaten path here, but we'd have to hire our own employee. If we couldn't, if we could find nobody to provide this service, we would have to employ individuals.
That's a possibility. We, we have to have something, because we have to have someone there. I mean, if you wanted to flush your toilet and it wasn't working, you need to call someone that can address that and keep the system.
And that might be as easy to do as finding a public health nurse.
Exactly. I would guess that's true. And as we know, we always have vacancies there, so, yeah. It's, it is a very specialized service, and I think we've, from what I can see, we've been fortunate that we do have someone that does take good care of it and has been responsible with it, because you're absolutely right. We, we don't have problems with the system right now, and we certainly want to keep it that way.
But it's, we're monitoring between Michelle and, I appreciate Mike.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
But sometimes I feel like maybe we're, we're between a rock and a hard place in regard to the services we need to provide for the community.
Well, I want to thank you for coming today for your comments, but also the comments that you made regarding the recognition of a rate increase, because I know, as we all knew, it was two thousand and eight that we said the last time it was in grades, and probably we should have been doing that incrementally, and it wouldn't have needed so much, but I want to thank Michelle for the attention. She's paid to this to make sure we don't run out of funds and that the reason we're doing it, but it was nice to hear you say that monitoring is what you'd like us to do, but you do recognize the need for this rate increase so that we don't run out of funding and can't pay for the services, so, thank you. Thanks for coming.
So two thousand and eight was the last time on. You've not been on the board six years now. It was easier to kick the can down the road, I admit.
I'm being difficult, but I think it's important we keep it solvent.
Do, who wants to say that?
I'll make the motion.
To?
Approve, yes, the rate of twenty-seven per month for, you want me to read the whole thing, or?
No.
Okay.
As written. I'll second as written.
All right.
All right. Any comments or questions? And I would prefer a roll call vote on this.
Yeah, I think it should be a resolution.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
All right. Ten B is a resolution that the request for the purchase of capital equipment submitted by Karen Scholwalt, her Elections Manager, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase five charging carts for the approximate cost of ten thousand dollars utilizing, utilizing money from the American Rescue Plan Funds.
So I will just add that this is a part of the original remodel of our new space. It's just that the vendor that they envisioned chose to go with, they don't provide these carts, and so we had to purchase them separately. It is seven carts, but it's the same price.
And it's ten thousand dollars total, not ten thousand dollars per cart?
Total.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes. Item ten C is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase one new twenty twenty-five Venki equipment trailer in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars from Blackhawk Equipment, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions? Kathy?
Yep, this comes out of our FY twenty-five budget. We did budget twenty-three thousand dollars for a trailer. This would primarily be used to haul our skid loaders around. We do have two of them, and it is important that we have a trailer so we can keep these, keep our staff efficient by being able to move these skid loaders around on a smaller-sized trailer. It will keep us more efficient. We did search for local vendors in northeast Iowa and did receive three quotes, and we would like to be able to purchase this from Blackhawk Rental, excuse me, for the twenty-one thousand dollars.
All right. Twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, right?
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
Kathy, did you say this is our second one, then? We'll have two?
No, we will have one trailer, but we have two skid loaders, and so we'll be able to move them around more efficiently. We have several other trailers that's for larger equipment.
Okay. I know we used to rent one yearly, and then we bought a new one instead of renting, but that's different.
Yes, okay. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes. Item ten D is a motion to approve the request to extend an offer of employment above the first half of the pay range for the position of Shop Foreman, GS eighteen, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, so this came about in the last budget session. This is a new position for us that I asked to create. I think we'll be much more efficient out of the shop with this position. We did advertise, and I did have some very good candidates to choose from. I was very pleased with the way that, that went, based on all that you've heard today about the difficulties in hiring people. We were pleased that we has a good selection, and we feel that we have selected a well-qualified individual, and I would like to go above the midpoint in making that offer.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is approved. Item ten E is a resolution in support of or opposing an application filed by Roger Hirschberger with the City of Jessup, Iowa, seeking the voluntary annexation of the following described real estate into the City of Jessup, Iowa pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter three sixty-eight. And it's a lengthy description that I'm not going to read, but it is on the agenda.
Come on.
Trust yourself.
Is Roger here?
Tim is.
Tim Jamison, Real Estate Tax Manager. I don't know if you have any questions. Mr. Hirschberger applied to the City of Jessup to have twenty-three acres of his, he's got a fifty-acre agricultural field that abuts the western edge of Jessup, and he wants to annex twenty-three acres into the city limit. So he applied to the City of Jessup. By code, the City of Jessup notified the county of this application and held a consultation meeting last week. Eric Schrader at Planning and Zoning reviewed it and didn't have any issues. I looked at it and didn't have any issues. I don't know if anyone else heard any issues with this, but there were no objections at the consultation hearing, and we were notified of that and asked to, by the city clerk, to approve a resolution supporting the annexation. By code, you're required within thirty days of that consultation hearing to pass a resolution either supporting, opposing, or taking no position on the request. Again, I've heard no opposition. If none of you have heard any opposition, the city's request was that you pass a resolution of support. Ultimately, the Jessup City Council will decide this. You could pass a resolution of opposition, and it would mean nothing legally.
I'll make a motion in support of.
Second. Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Linda, you had some questions on this, I noticed through emails the other day. Did you get them clarified?
Yes, I was going to say, Tim was good to respond on that, so thank you. As far as, it was the notification, I think, that was written that we were asked to support it, and then I think my question to Tim was that I didn't receive anything, and he forwarded something on to us.
Correct. I had asked him to make sure the correspondence went to the board office, but I think that email just came to me, so I apologize for not forwarding that right away. I thought maybe you'd already received it, but I'll try to make sure you get those in the future. There will be, prior to the Jessup City Council voting on this, they're required to notify the chairperson of the board, supervisors of their public hearing, so we'll make sure we get that to you.
See, Tim's got more information than you ever want to know about it, so I knew he was the right person to ask. Last week I asked if he was going to the meeting. Thanks, Tim.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes. I'll be, we're getting into some discussions that could be quite lengthy, so let's take a quick recess.
Unfortunately.
Recording in progress.
All right. We are back in session. Item ten F is discussion in regard to local preference bidding policy. Davis?
Yeah, yeah, so I threw this on the agenda just to sort of have, give folks a chance, the board, a chance to take a look before we perhaps take it to department heads or elsewhere. The gist of, of the policy is that any local business that owns, operates out of, or leases a building within the county, that's the definition of, of local business, within our bidding procedures would allow for a, a five percent grace period under five hundred thousand, three percent over five hundred thousand, with a max of thirty thousand dollars from the lowest qualified bid. So Mike and I've sort of gone back and forth a couple times on this. There is, in this draft, some acknowledgement that, particularly with state dollars, I know in, from the engineer's side in particular, different sources of dollars don't always allow for this type of consideration, but in the event that a policy doesn't exist from the state or federal, that this sort of... this sort of provision isn't precluded, um, then it would allow, um, in fact mandate, you know, in, in this, uh, language, uh, that we give that preference to local business.
I like having a policy because I support, even if the local bidder is higher, supporting that local business. And, uh, Mike provided input in regard to the concerns that were raised. Uh, how do others feel?
I'm a fan, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a fan of this. Um, I feel like as we're investing, um, taxpayers' dollars, it's best when possible to do it in a way that's building up our local economy and thus having the result of expanding the tax base ultimately.
Linda?
Well, I was gonna ask, you mentioned Mike.
I, I don't think I provided any input as to concerns at this point. I know that I've, uh, had an informal discussion with, with Tavis just before the meeting. I've had some discussions with Tom about it, but I don't, uh, I don't believe I emailed anything out about concerns that were raised, uh, at this point.
Okay, I was just gonna make sure we didn't forego those and say like he had concerns or didn't, but then we didn't.
Legally speaking, what, uh, what's happened is we started with, uh, kind of hybridizing what were some, I had done some, some searching for various local preference policies, including outside of the state of Iowa. And what I found was, uh, a couple of policies, uh, nearby, one with Lynn County, one with Johnson County, I believe, or one might have been a city policy as well. And we took some out of both of those, uh, to create what was here initially. Uh, the draft that I created provided it as an optional, uh, an option to, you, you go with the local contractor. This one, uh, Tavis had some concerns with doing that. There wouldn't be enough teeth in it. Came back with one that would require, um, going with the local contractor provided the other, uh, requirements were met. And there wasn't any problem with state or federal law preempting that, uh, preference. And so, that was what resulted in the proposal that all of you currently have.
Okay.
Over the, over the years, the board obviously has had discussion on this item as well as local government entities in Blackhawk County. Um, I think everybody supports local. Some of the concerns that come up at different levels when we had these discussion was, we have to keep in mind, um, I know Chris said it's local money, we're putting back in it and that's very true, but we're also spending tax dollars and we have a responsibility to make sure that we spend it wisely. Another concern that came about during our discussions over the years was if you would continue to take local, eventually you're not gonna get any outside bidders. And then you're gonna pretty much be stuck with one vendor that obviously could raise their, their bids on future items and so forth. So, that was a concern. Uh, we talked about it extensively. It's similar to the Robert rules. Nobody adopts Robert rules because then you have to really dot the i's and cross the t's or you'll get called on it for technicality and it could very well exist with this policy. So, over the years, there's been a lot of discussion. Um, I think currently, um, we take the lowest best bid and I think there's been numerous times where we have taken local. Uh, it wasn't necessarily the lowest, but it was the best bid. So, I think we have some leeway yet, but I think we're kind of walking a thin line there. When we're spending, uh, taxpayers' money, we have to be wise on, uh, how we're spending it. So, uh, if there is a lot of discussion, eventually this is gonna have to go to the Policy Committee anyway.
Any others?
Yeah, sure. Um, I, I'm, I'm glad they say you brought it forward and we should have the opportunity to look at it and, and move forward in discussions. Um, as Tom mentioned, they've probably discussed it for years. I know it has been somewhat since I've been on the board and, and, uh, in theory, like I said, I worked for businesses for over twenty-five years in supporting them and being an advocate for them. So, our local businesses have a real importance, um, it, to our community for the jobs they provide and the taxes they pay. But, um, looking at this too, I want to say, and I don't mean that as a big but, but just the increased cost to taxpayers was something I said we, I, I'd want us to at least be aware of what that is, or at least in general, something that we need to think about. And the fact it does limit competition, I do believe, and I think we've got instances where we've seen that probably occur. Um, this one, it looks like there's a different, um, administrative policy, something that you'd be looking at maybe for a team of people or to review was, like, the proposals. That's kind of what it looks, I mean, and this is just first blush, I don't look into this, so.
The, the process I think you're referring to is when you have a team reviewed proposal, such as a scored proposal, which sometimes comes up for design work, uh, sometimes for certain professional services. And to give you, uh, some recent examples where we've had those, not all of these would qualify, some of them were ARPA, but we've had playground designs, we've had, uh, the, uh, HR, uh, review that was done, or the HR study, uh, that was done that way. Some of these, I think the mobile health clinic was done that way. What they do is they gather, uh, some departments will gather a team of reviewers because price is only one component, among other things. And what this does is allows for a process that still gives some local preference. Um, and what it does.
I'm just asking, I guess, Mike, I understand the process. I'm just saying it's an administrative level that we don't have currently or a component of it, I guess, making.
I think we do sometimes.
Oh, we do sometimes.
We do sometimes.
And so, I was trying to account for that.
But the local preference part is.
But we don't have a local preference.
No, so that would be added to what we're looking at, kind of as a criteria, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Assuming something like that.
And, and this proposal in, in understand it's, you know, as far as being put before the public, this is a first draft, but this proposal, uh, what it does is it affects the scoring of the cost factor of a scored proposal, uh, differently. Just the cost factor, the other factors would remain, uh, scored as the committee may score them. So, what it states is it says, um, proposals from local businesses are permitted to score the cost factor proposal, or the, the team is permitted to score this cost factor proposals of local businesses the same as the cost factor in the lowest cost qualifying proposal if the cost submitted by the local business does not exceed the cost of the lowest qualifying proposal by more than five percent for projects under five hundred thousand, or three percent for projects five hundred thousand plus.
That didn't help me a lot, but thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I have it in front of me reading, it helps, but yeah, that's okay. No, thank you.
Could you, could you repeat that? Could you repeat that, Mike?
No, no, but I'll get it to you and send it. So, I just thought there are other factors sometimes that get in, in the process too, I was gonna say. And, and to be just local only, I guess I'd like to see us, we need to consider reputation. We need to consider experience, probably history of the company working with us and good or bad and what that is. And sometimes just because you're local doesn't mean you have the best reputation or service or anything, I guess, with us. So, I just, I think those are other components that maybe at least we need to be aware of or thinking about and not always giving it to local. But just keeping our options open, I guess, for that. And the word, when you mentioned required, I guess thinking it gives it more teeth, was actually something that I bristled with a little bit just because I like us having some decision-making in it or for reasons that aren't and not being mandated to tell me that I have to do local and you can't consider anything else just because they're local. That there could be experiences in, in working relationships that the local may not be the best choice.
Sure. And I think in, in most of those RSPs, to Mike's point, this only affects the cost factor. This does not take into account the other determinative factors when reviewing.
So, this, looking at it, then you mean like this would just be, cost would be one factor?
Correct. So, you'd still have, you'd still have, let's say, I don't know, uh, quality of work. Um.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah. Ability to deliver, all of those, all of those.
Yes.
All that within the metrics is just factors in on the cost side.
And, and that would be for, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that would be when a scored proposal is used. And that's a voluntary decision by a department head to go with that route. So, to give you some examples, professional services under our bidding and purchasing policy do not have to use any kind of competitive proposal. That does not change under this policies. Those, so local preference does not bind anyone deciding on a professional service. The reason that a scored proposal is always, is thrown up as an option is because, and that's, that's already in the policy, is because sometimes people find that that's the best way to, uh, determine what the best proposal is for a project where it, it doesn't, uh, the determination can't be made on cost alone. And I, I use frequently the example of designs, whether it be an office remodel, a, a playground, uh, whatever it might be. There are different things where, you know, there's so many, there's so many factors that have to be weighed. But, uh, to, uh, to Supervisor Leyland's point about, uh, not binding, this does bind you as to purchase of products or just straight up cost type bids. Um, and there, there are ways to structure this policy of so it doesn't. Um, this was what, uh, what Supervisor Hall wanted to go with on this particular one, and so that's how this is prepared. But it's definitely possible to do this as an optional, uh, thing where you can say, the, the department head can go with a marginally higher local proposal if the department head wants to, but if the department head wants to stick with just lowest cost for, you know, whatever reason, department head would have that leeway as well. And that's obviously up to the board, but I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I knew there would be a lot of massaging probably, yeah. This is just a starting place, but I like it. I know, and the one paragraph where it meant reference should not be so great that it impose exorbitant costs. And I thought I'd probably would ask for a definition of what is exorbitant or what those costs would be.
I mean, we do, in the next paragraph, it does outline, it does not, it cannot exceed thirty thousand dollars. So, five percent under five hundred thousand, three percent over five hundred thousand, not to exceed thirty thousand.
And so, that, so it's not so much the exorbitant, just the, the definition that's, I mean, that we use there.
You know, and I'm sure it's happened before. I can't remember a specific situation, but department heads have been really good about articulating why they go with a particular bid on a project, even if it's not the lowest bid.
Yes.
And that's all I ask.
They have. I think, like you said, opening up this up to them and them exploring it or telling us what their thoughts are, experience, I guess I'm looking at too, would help on how many times we use local bidders or how many times we've lost, if they recall, um, you know, what opportunities for what significant dollars to. I think that's.
Yeah, and if.
Because we obviously know it's gonna cost taxpayers more money to do this, bottom line.
Correct.
So, what cost, I guess that comes the benefit to, I mean, and I understand the local dollars and staying in our community.
Yeah, I mean, I think at some point, local government has to put their money where their mouth is. If they're asking folks to invest in community and we're refusing to revest, you know, and.
I know what you're saying.
This, this gets us here. I do think, you know.
Do other local communities, do it, do Waterloo, Cedar Falls? I, I don't even know. Do they have a policy like this?
I'm unsure. I know that, I know that Cedar Rapids, uh, Lynn County, uh, I believe Johnson might have been the other one that we looked at. Uh, so other counties do adopt this type of policy. Uh.
I don't believe, I don't believe Waterloo or Cedar Falls has a local bidding process.
Okay, and I'm just doing it from a learning perspective. I'd like to hear, they probably looked at it, thought about it, considered it, talked about it and seeing yes or no, why they have it. Just more information I just wanted to gain from it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if we want it to be flexible on the requirement versus a recommendation, okay. Um, I do think it is, there is value in at least putting it in the policy, um, for department heads to, to, to consider it, right? And, and to recognize, um, if, if this were to pass, it would recognize the board's desire to.
Well, I think for us, it's important. I mean, to recognize that. I think we've seen bids, you know, come up and be close, sometimes within hundreds of dollars.
Yeah.
Or whatever. And we've looked at the local economy and thought like, oh, but yeah, so I think it's an awareness and we.
And obviously, it's an easier policy for a county to institute than a city.
Mm-hmm.
But I hope the cities are paying attention and.
Sure.
Because.
Oh, you're limited geographically. At least with a county, you're, you're a more broad area. It just seems to make more sense. I can remember the first time, I, I was a young chief almost thirty years ago. I bought squad cars from Illinois outside of Wisconsin. One of the biggest mistakes ever made because they were the cheapest, by far the cheapest. They were junk. And no, no support from the dealer in Illinois.
Yeah.
And I got blowback from the local dealers.
Sure.
As I should have. So, it was a learning experience. So, I support, wholly support the spirit of this policy.
I mean, just to clarify real.
To me, this is about, um, just maximizing that effect, uh, the taxpayers' dollars that we are investing. Um, and so that when the bids do come to be that's reasonably close, as kind of outlined with the percentage points in the policy, that if we can recirculate those dollars in our own community and support jobs in our own community with our own people's money, then, then I think we're, we're sending it a lot further down the road and, and building this, our local economy up a lot more.
Oh, yeah, I think that is the spirit, more or less, you're speaking of it, that we're wanting to show, but I just that, I just think that there's a little more homework or fleshing out to do this before we say, yeah, this is definitely the way to go.
This is a good start. This is another issue that we've talked about before. It's nice to finally see it on paper and have a discussion.
Yeah, like to kick it over.
You mentioned like next steps or something.
Yeah, I'd like to kick it over to department heads to get feedback. I wanted to see if there was at least some interest in further exploring amongst the board before waste their time on, on reading through and thinking through, uh.
I don't know if that'd be like a work session or something. It might be helpful with all of us here if that is or what, but after they've had a chance to look at it and see if they're.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, input for that, that'd be great.
Input from them and then come back and, and do a, you know, another discussion.
Sure.
On that, on those conversations. And yeah, in the meantime, folks work through their own process.
That sounds great. Let's get to the department heads and have further discussions.
Sounds good.
All right. And if anybody, if any board members have input, please provide them, email them, whatever, comments, suggestions. All right, we can move on to ten G, discussion possible board action in regard to fiscal year twenty-five community service funding request.
I, I added this on the agenda just knowing that we had this, uh, we talked about it last week and, uh, I think it was last week.
Yeah, I think we thought about even voting last week and decided to wait a week.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I don't know if we want to take this one bite at a time, uh.
There's not too many, maybe we should. I mean, just looking at maybe your proposals for those, because I think, I remember last time we kind of, there was a listing and we got, got lost, some of us, and we're trying to keep up.
Sure.
That'd be great. An input maybe is each one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I know that, before, before we get too far here, I know that we've got Cal Congress up next as a separate agenda item. So, I think just to note that, uh, as I work through, um, some numbers here, um, I.
I was wondering, Tavis, we could just first start from the children's reminder of how much, um, how's been allocated this year for this?
I believe a hundred thousand is what we budgeted.
Yeah.
So.
I, I thought that that had been increased from previous years in this current year's budget.
All right, let me double check, because maybe I'm mistaken.
I know, I tried to keep close.
Yeah, I thought.
Did you? I could, I could make that work.
I think, you know, we originally did put more in and then we.
I think we pared it back.
We were trying to balance.
Yeah.
We pared it back, but we did put fifty thousand straight into the food bank, which had historically taken a large chunk of that hundred thousand, so.
That's true. I assume.
And I think from these requests, because your request, Cal Congress request was part of these two, we were removing food bank and Cal Congress from this list.
That was, that was my, that was my thought, is that we've, we have allocated or, you know, potentially will. Um, so for that, for those purposes, um, I was just trying to get us close to a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Of a total of seven hundred and fifty-nine.
It was, yeah, one of our larger requests.
Um, so looking, looking through here.
Well, if you wanted to kind of generalize too, did you have a process or anything?
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so, so generally, I, you know, I looked at it and tried to sort of categorize a little bit. You know, there, there were strains of commonality from a lot of these requests. And so, you know, sort of looking through, there's, you know, housing, food, economic development, youth, and then sort of a more generalized community need that I thought were sort of all, all present, all articulated through the proposals. I do think that we should fine tune in future years what we want to see, maybe a dollar amount limit on a request, maybe allocating X amount of dollars for economic development, for housing, for food, doesn't have to be hard and true, maybe we won't have as many applications and, and make a deviation, but I think at least it serves as a reference point for applicants. If you got $25,000 in a, in a pool, you know, asking for $75,000 is, is too much. And I, as I noted, I think we should just have a hard limit on what you can ask for, recognizing.
And making that recognizable in the application process, I guess, how many dollars are allocated for this, so don't, yeah, come with those requests.
Yeah, I think additionally, from a, from a oversight standpoint and, and the payment part, I think really requiring them to be specific in their asks moving forward and have deliverables, that's going to make issuing of those payments a heck of a lot easier. I know, we get to that now, but that tends to be after we make the, the recommendation on funding, and then Michelle and Mike have to do some, some real legwork to make all of those contracts and keep everything straight.
So just a few years ago, we changed it.
Yeah, and we're still going to have to do those, and they're still going to have to identify the services that serve our public purposes.
I think it's best if we can, in future years, say that has to be an upfront, that's a part of your application, is that actionable item that's going to be the sort of base of that contract.
Bringing in more realistic requests then.
Correct, correct. Not as, not as broad, I mean, we recognize that all of these agencies have broad purposes and they have broad benefit, but I think for us to allocate dollars, it's best if, if we can get to a point where there's for specific purposes.
I think we were hoping to kind of have some categories or something identified before this one, and '25 just got away from all of us, and we haven't done that, so.
Because every year it seems.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we have to, you know, make a real goal of doing that for the next one, so we can be upfront with everybody.
Yeah, I mean, so I sort of looked back at what we've done for organizations last year, those that, that applied, that were repeat applicants, you know, tried to stay around half if we could make it work, just sort of playing around with some of the numbers, and was able to get pretty close on a number of these. We've got a good chunk of, we've got a couple that hadn't applied previously.
It's nice to see those, because I thought some were actually just almost submitted the same application and just same amount in the request too, so, but yeah, it was good to see, like 4-8.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that was, that was a new one for us, right? So my thought was, they requested $10,000, $5,000 there. For Boys and Girls Club, we did $10,000 last year, I think, $10,000 for that program makes sense. $2,500 for United Way, same as last year. House of Hope, $10,000, same as last year, Friends of the Family, the same, Girls Cedar Valley, the same, recognizing they've got, they've got a population study that would potentially be one that we would want to have as their actionable item in the contract.
Okay, I was going to ask about that, because I was going to say, I don't know that they identified.
They didn't identify, yeah, I serve on, I'm a liaison on that board, and yeah, they're, they're undergoing a population study, which certainly impacts what we do here, and it's a professional study, so it's, you know, those things cost.
And you said $25 for that? I had, I think 20, just because I was trying to hit the $100,000, and I think we're a little over, okay.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
When we did adopt the budget, Chris was right, we did indicate we would pay some from fund balance, I believe $250,000, so we have 100 that we, or, you know, that we were taking out of taxes, I guess I want to say, and $250,000, you did indicate you would fund that out of fund balance.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that was, thanks, Michelle, that was my recollection, and I wanted to make sure I wasn't clearly listening.
No, I apologize, because I should have looked at that this morning.
But for, okay, for this, we stayed with $100,000.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I got to, just off of sort of looking at folks and trying to go about half and base off of history, total of 115, and then again, that's separate from the 50 that we're already doing with the food bank and the conversation of cattle congress. Just getting back to, to the list that's, that I've got, $7,500 for Habitat, again, that's half of their request, $10,000 for legal aid, half of their request mirrors what, what they received last year, $10,000 for the Little Knights Learning Center, that is not, that's, they requested 50, but after the presentation, I felt like $10,000, to me, felt appropriate, by all means, you know, I'm open to any other recommendations.
I wasn't sure, I was kind of in that five or 10, and really, it was somewhat based on the presentation, when they came back and had the solution with the schools, that they said was working so well, and I wondered if in the future, they wouldn't find that maybe they didn't need the new building, that they'd have some kind of a working relationship, but wanted to help, so.
Yeah. As noted, cattle congress and food bank, those have been chatted through, the PGC outreach, you know.
That was the last one we had.
That was the last, I mean, she, you know, that is, that was pure passion, and.
Yeah, for sure.
That demonstrated, you know, why she's able to connect to the community that she's, that she's serving, so I feel like $7,500, she's able to food, she's able to feed a lot of folks off of that.
That was a new one, we've never had.
That was a new one, I do think we'll have to figure out a way on the deliverable side so that we're not buying groceries every, every month. But are we able to contribute on behalf to a foundation? I, I know she had mentioned that she's received some foundation funding, are we able? I don't know with.
We legally.
I don't need funding really, so then.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, I just wasn't sure.
These are not donations, these are, these are consideration for services provided to us.
Yeah, okay, so we'll just have to figure out with her how to.
It might be grocery bills.
It might just be, it might just be.
Fed people, I mean.
It is, I just don't know that it makes sense for us to be processing payment like weekly.
No, no.
If she has funding through a community foundation or something.
Yeah, might have to be.
It might be a, you know, she can kind of use that money.
Yep.
Happy to talk about it, I'm sure.
But like I said, when she went through the numbers of, well, she finally got through to the numbers of how many folks she was feeding and the dollars that it was taking for her to feed them, that $7,500 provided about half of the meals that she'd be able to do for the year, and it was serving a real need. $10,000 for Riverview Center, again, not half, but in keeping with what we were, what we had contributed last year, and then $7,500 for World Grace Project, which is pretty close to where we were last year, they were at 10, would get, bump it down just a little to $7,500, just to, that was really just to keep it within some closeness to, I had that $100,000 in my head, I, I didn't recall them, that's, that's good news, I guess, of the, of the additional flexibility.
I have reserves, yes, and projects, I thought too, for that, for that, but yeah, I was just going to say, keeping in line with what we're doing. Yeah, and the only one, and the $2,500 for the books, I'd only considered half of that just because we'd really looked at half for, half or less for everybody else, so I thought in the spirit of things, but obviously their program.
It was.
I'm, I'm just kind of thinking that maybe we need to give more, one, one more week to this, that we're kind of working this within what we did allocate instead of the lesser amount. Maybe the proportions are, are good that we've come up with, we just need to adjust the, the numbers, but I, I do, you know, we did budget for that $250,000, I want to see us utilize that.
Yeah, I understand your point, Chris, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, just, I remember there was a timeline that we asked these people, and it was very quick, and they turned around, and that was some of the reason why they just did submit the same project again. Obviously, there are other needs in the community, I don't know. I, I, I don't know, I guess just to, just to award, because this year, we have more money to say these people all get funded, when there are still lots of needs out there, I don't, could we do that differently, or is there some other way to, rather than just say, here's the list, it comes to, say it's at $250,000, so we give all these people that everything they asked for.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It does give us some flexibility with cattle congress, and we can have that discussion later too, as far as things that, or other projects, you know, that come up, I guess, that we could utilize as well.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I do think, you know.
I mean, I see those as all, those are all separate requests outside of this budget process that we laid out and set a budget for.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think you and I have both sort of gone through this and tried to stay at that 100, which was part of the justification, at least for me, was part of the justification for some of these numbers, knowing that we did, you know, with the recollection of, of that there are additional dollars there, does that change the, the dollar amounts that would have been, you know, to Chris's point, taking another week to really look at these and say, okay, we, we could come up a little higher, or we're comfortable here, I'm.
Boy, considering.
I'm comfortable with this, but yeah.
I mean, I, I support another week to contemplate, especially, well.
We went through the struggle of budgeting for it.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to just rush into, because we were, I think, a lot of us under that $100,000 figure in our head, I don't, I don't want that to necessarily cloud after we went through, and what was it, you know, I think, all agree, a more difficult budget year, we did that to not honor that pain, and at least give this thing a once-over with all the facts on the table, I think would do us and the agencies a disservice. So I'm comfortable to wait another week, reflect, yeah.
Or think about, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. Any other comments or questions? 10H, discussion in regard to the strategic plan proposal.
Well, I did at least respond to Mr. Garnett and kind of got back to him that we had discussed, you know, the dates, and doing, the concern we had a little bit with doing something on Tuesdays, which was board meeting dates, and even though we were still open to whatever, let's see where this would go, we talked about Tuesdays and Thursdays being a possibility. I mentioned, I didn't, I don't think I said specifically, but you had mentioned mornings worked best, so we need to say kind of mornings would be the, the better option for us, and obviously not tacking something onto the board meeting because we said three, but one, he was looking at two and a half hour segments, that being kind of a long session, and we might tend to not have our minds on something in that last hour. And his response to me was this, so I wanted to share this and then see where we go from here. Linda, we'll have to work on the schedule. We typically do one full day, seven hours, and then several four-hour chunks for the follow-up planning sessions, so I tried to consider the needs of your board, because I mentioned to him, we all have a lot of different directions we're going, and that was tough for scheduling, but he's, so, and leaned out the time slots by getting it to two and a half hours each. We might be able to get it to two hours each, but any less and you stop your momentum and have to pick back up halfway through the last meeting, just to remember where you're at in the workflow, and that's not efficient. I'd have to charge about one and a half times as much to do shorter meetings because of the cost of the start-stop inefficiency. He, but he mentioned, he's out of the state now, so he knows we have some alignment and the commitment, he'll work on a more formal scope, proposal, contract, but I went back to him and just said, perhaps you could zoom in, and I know when he was busy now and couldn't, but I said, maybe to one of our meetings, zoom in and explain a little bit more to us, or give us some of that detail on how we could do it, maybe there is something we could do or dates we could find that would work, I wasn't sure any of us could take being together for seven hours. That sounded a little long, but, but if that's the way it worked best, I said, and it has, I'd love to hear his explanations and talk or discussions, or what variety of things they've done, not to shortchange our efforts at making this successful and getting it done too, so.
I mean, you know, when I've done strategic planning with different boards that I've sat on or organizations that I've been a part of, there is that sort of marathon session, and, you know, I think, I think strategic planning is important enough at the county level that if it takes us a day, then okay, we, we do that. I think my hesitation on tacking them on after, you know, sort of our regular business, Tuesday morning meetings, it's almost too much of a pivot, and quite frankly, if we've got a couple meetings that are more contentious than others, you know, how does that, how does that bode for that strategic planning session that follows sort of our business? So I like the idea of the Thursday mornings.
So do I.
It allows us to come in with a fresh perspective, you know, hopefully a positive and productive perspective, and if we have to do one of those, not have to, but get to, do one of those longer, more marathon sessions, it does allow us to sort of roll our sleeves up a little bit and.
Okay, I just like to, maybe we do the seven hour too, and kind of try that, or some, some format, maybe it's, but, uh, Wednesday, morning, afternoon, lunch, whatever, but it's, it is somewhat like a retreat, where, like you said, you go in and you really kind of commit to the timeline to, because I think, what do we call that, the plan to planning? So it kind of sets the tone for where we go from there, I think, and.
I think we've all done it, as, as, you know, members of organizations that we're proud to be a part of, and I think, you know, that whole, know that we're all proud to be a part of this one, so, yeah.
So a willingness to at least do that, and let's come up with some date, I mean, him, come up with proposals or something for it, okay.
Tom, Chris?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I like dedicating, having the dedicated longer session.
Yep.
Thanks, that's great, I just, I had no idea when he sent us the first time that he planned a seven hour and four hour session, so it was good to know, thank you.
That's an exhausting.
We won't talk to each other for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other discussion in regard to the strategic plan proposal? Looks like we've got a path.
Movement.
Super, okay.
All right, item 10I, discussion possible board action in regard to National Cattle Congress, I think, Tavis, you asked to put this back down.
Just, you know, we had, we had told them that it'd be two weeks, they sort of came back to us and said, hey, where are we at on this? We said, give us two weeks, and so figured we'd hold our feet to the fire and, and be it two weeks. Yeah, I've got, of course, thoughts, but I'm sure everybody else does too, and I'm, you know, I'm down, I'm down.
I'm down to leave that.
Proposal, yeah. No, great, and I wanted to thank Deb, I was going to say, she provided me a lot of information, and I said, I don't know if you want to speak to anything more this morning or not, I guess, about the proposal, or what's going on, or update us or anything too, but it was a good discussion, helpful for me.
Deb Pollan Ben Akin, I live at 602 East Eagle Road, rural Waterloo, and I, I really want to thank everyone for your support, we feel a lot of support from you, I think you can see through our, our communications that we have some immediate needs and what those specifically are, tried to lay those out and be very open about that, you know, where we're going in the future, where our plans are, and how we want to get there, because we do, are forcing ourselves to plan for the future and to get better fairgrounds in place that is more functional and supports economic development in the Cedar Valley. It's very important to bring tourism from outside the area to the Cedar Valley, because that's what tourism is, is bringing people from the outside, not only looking at what people want here and what they would support, but how to bring people in from the outside for things they will support, to bring money into the community. So we are here to answer any questions you might have, welcome, you know, your discussions and how you feel, so just know we're here.
It would appear there's support amongst the board for this, the only question is in a mouth.
And for what, I guess? And for what, I guess, if it was just a, yeah.
Correct, I mean, I, you know, I, looking at, and I appreciate the list that you've provided of, of counties from across the state and their ongoing support and I think. When I've thought of this, it's sort of been in three buckets, there's an ongoing support, there's, you know, a capital fund. And then there is the study for the future of the cattle congress, um, that capital fund for items that come up that need repaired and sound, sounded like from Mark, I think Mark's comments a couple of weeks ago. You know, that fund had been sort of depleted over the last couple of years out of, um, you know, just maintenance. Yeah, there had been some dollars put in and naturally with buildings is, is old, that, that are out there, they're, the rent comes due. With the, in, in terms of the ongoing, my initial thought, uh, is I'd like for us to be around 25,000, um, ongoing with a speci, and specifically for marketing expenses for the fair. I recognize that that's often a place that folks can cut, but I also recognize that by investing in that marketing, you're investing in bringing additional attendees, creating additional revenue. Uh, and so earmarking those dollars specifically towards marketing, I think, helps, uh. It, it helps the, sort of, again, the oversight part of making sure that contract can be executed, um, a little easier. Um, you know, 25,000 towards a marketing firm to handle social media, handle that sort of stuff. Uh, to me makes a, a ton of sense and provides value, um, that is able to generate dollars back to the organization on an, on an annual basis.
Deb, you had 28,000 put in for the marketing for this year's fair, is that something, is a typical line item every year and about that amount, or is this something?
We've been paying 28,000 per year.
Per year.
So that's a nice big chunk of that, and as an update from yesterday, we, I think we're going to switch to our former marketing firm, um, to get a jumpstart on, on this year's.
Okay.
It's one of the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that before, but we've talked with them, that they already have, you know, what we've done in the past will change that, based on what you and I talked about, about how digital marketing and social media is a much better buy.
Yeah.
And a much better, bigger impact than radio or TV, just, it's, and newspaper, it's just the way it is. So, yeah, it's, um, the, we went to the Association of Iowa Fairs convention and I attended all the marketing sessions during that convention, all the breakouts. They say you want 80% of your marketing budget in digital and social media, because it's that important, that's just the fact of life.
Yeah.
And we have to do what's best for the organization.
And the jumpstart's important because we are, it's a critical time, I think we're like September eighteenth or whatever is the fair.
Absolutely.
We're gonna hope that the weather cooperates this year and gives us, but in the meantime, to do as much marketing as you could, you were trying to get now.
Yes.
I support that, 25,000 dollars continually.
Yeah.
What others, what other ideas do you have there, I see the wheels spinning.
Well, that's 25,000, let me clarify too, I was gonna ask you then, as far as from this, of this fund that we're talking about, maybe a little bit with the 250,000 from reserves or you thinking something different? Because obviously we have the ability to tax for it if we want to, I, whether we ever want to do that or if we don't, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think similarly to the food bank, where we have that, it, it's, it's, it's built into our budget specifically. Um, I, I think that helps provide more certainty for them versus come back every year and, and we just figure out if we can get you to 25. I, I'd, I'd, I'd prefer to, as a board, say we're gonna put this into the budget. Now, for this, and maybe you're asking specifically for this year, since we've already crafted, you know, for this year, especially now that we do know that we've got some more flexibility beyond 100,000. Maybe, maybe that's a, a piece that we can do so that they can put those dollars to immediate use. Uh, that's a really nice part about digital, is you can activate those dollars very fast as opposed to more traditional forms of marketing, so, um, I mean, I'd be comfortable, um.
I like the thought of the doing it ongoing, I'm just a little bit reluctant at this point, I think I shared with you a little bit, until we add more information on the stud, or the, the study, I guess it's gonna be done and some of those types of things and how. If that's still where we want to direct it or if we want to specify something differently or.
I mean, I think, I think the study is. It's not completely independent of the fair, however. If this. If there are large structural changes and large directional changes that are determined and, and acted upon off of that study, there's still gonna be the fair, presumably, right? And, and if, and, and heaven forbid there's not, then it's an annual, it's an annual decision from the board.
And on that point, in order to maintain ourselves as a fair under the Iowa code, we are required to hold a fair and it must have an agricultural component. And there are other things like so many acres and so forth, but we do have to have the fair and we have to have an agricultural component.
That's good, that's helpful, yeah, so, I think.
Was your action to be though for this year and then reconsider it each year, rather than just to say no, that's, I guess my question was, not to say commit dollars yet till we knew more, but.
I mean, we can't, we can't commit dollars for, in perpetuity, we, we, we make, we make those decisions every year in the budget process, but it wouldn't, I'm suggesting that that 25,000 per year would not come out of the community services fund. It would be separate of that, just as the, the food bank dollars are separate outside of that community service, yeah.
I, I, I support this approach, I mean, we're, honestly, as Tavis said, we have, we set the budget every year, but this is just indicating our intention that we, our intention that we do believe that the county should be in on some level every year, uh, supporting our county fair.
Yeah, that's true, like, it could change from year to year or something possibly, but yeah, okay, thanks, Chris.
Uh, yeah, I would, I would make a motion on, are we still able to stay on, once I make a motion on one part of it, are we still able to?
I'm taking this fight by fight.
Okay.
So that's why I'm.
All right, so I would make a motion, um, for 25,000 for marketing expenses, um, uh, for the National Cattle Congress.
Fair for this year.
Fair for this year, correct.
I'll second it. Any other comments or questions just on that part, and then we'll bite off more today. All right, uh, roll call vote, please, Karen.
Little.
Um, I got a question for Mike, do I have a conflict of interest seeing as if my brother's on the board?
Uh, per prior discussion, uh, there's no direct conflict of interest unless it directly affects you financially, um, whether or not you abstain is still, uh, within your discretion.
Believe me, he ain't gonna give me nothing. Oh, you waiting for me?
Little, yep.
Your vote.
Yes, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Traka?
Yes, all right, still on ten I, more.
So, uh, what was the cost that was identified with the study?
So the project manager contract is for 125,000 dollars.
And you want to elaborate a little bit on that, just the timeline you shared with me and that type of thing when we had that, just to provide some of the.
Yeah, and the timeline's a little bit variable, because we are going to apply for grant money to pay for this, this contract. So we can't, we have to worry about starting too soon and, or paying him too soon and doing that, because it could disqualify us for grants. But initially, it was about three months to do the initial work, to, you know, do the site layout, to do all the background work that he needed to do, to talk with the, the planning and zoning and, and all of those things. Then about three months for the RFP process to run its course, um, bidding this out, you know, actually sending RFPs out nationally. This is not gonna be just local, it'll be, we'll look at national firms, this isn't something typical, fairgrounds aren't typically renovated like this. Um, and finding out all the ideas we could have, so that was about three months, and there was another three months, by the time you get the plans in, you can look them over, you figure out which components of the plans work or don't work, working through that process. So I'd say nine to 12 months.
Okay.
Again, very loose, we don't want to do it wrong, you know, but it is 125,000 for the whole work process.
And you do know of a grant or something that was identified that would last.
Yeah, we've identified some local foundations that, that we actually have some people on the board that sit on some foundations or have connections with foundations. Um, of course, gaming helps with this sort of, uh, project, so there are some various ones that we have identified to go to, it just depends on their grant cycle. And how we finish their grant cycle.
Is that something perhaps you'd consider or would like it to consider us being a part of that group or consideration of it?
Yeah, I definitely think we should.
When the plans.
Yeah, we should, we should, we should definitely be, I would think, a part of that funding mechanism to get to that 125.
We would very much appreciate that.
No, go ahead, no, I was just gonna say, what's the next step in this?
Listening that carefully, because I was thinking, but you, you're in the process of applying for grants, have you already, have you already submitted applications?
We have not, we have not.
So we partner with the fair, that should improve the odds?
Yes, greatly.
Of a grant?
Most of them require 50, they won't go over 50%, they want to see another 50% come from either internally, we don't have the funds right now for that, or through a, a group process, so that, that helps tremendously.
So are you looking at doing some type of a, I, I was just trying to short, this, shorten the process a little bit for you too, of making a presentation to some of these groups or doing something so that we all hear the same message, get our questions answered and that type of thing? And then seeing if there could be some kind of a collective effort to fund this and do it faster, I guess, for you than going to each one or?
We could do a planning process like that to see how the puzzle pieces fit together, we could do that.
I, I just think when you put everybody together in a room, they're gonna make, try to make this work, because they see the benefit of the community, us as well, but.
Or if one's willing to throw their hat in, it shows the desire, hopefully others would follow, lead, follow up that lead.
Have you done any presentations with the, with the groups, you just know of them because of board members and relationships?
We do know one board member has spoken with a charitable foundation and they are willing to support it, just trying to again, put those puzzle pieces together, but he felt very strongly that they would be one of the group, one of, a part of that group.
Okay, great.
As you all have outlined, you know, sort of bar napkins, the, that 125 of, of how you'd get there. What do you anticipate you would need from the county to get to that 125 to pay for that study?
Well, in our last board meeting, not knowing that you all would be supportive of that at that time, we were working on, you know, loosely a third, a third, a third, we had three different groups possibly identified, um, to approach. One with the, yeah, I'm pretty sure I can get them to support what, what we want to do, um, didn't talk about a dollar level, was just, you know, who could we identify and where could we go? So we had already identified those three to approach, but that was just two weeks ago, it, it just happened and we'd had the fair going on, so that's been taking a lot of our, our planning time as well, not, not the board, but staff, right.
Cattle congress is over, I'm sure that's been high gear, um, I would think though, like, to put something together, like I say, in writing a proposal or something and present it to like, when I'm thinking of, like, the Metrofunders Group, you know, is about 10 or 12 or whatever groups and then others like counties and different ones that are cities, I don't know, that could be invited to that same group meeting or whatever and to hear a proposal and then determine if our timelines can meet, our, obviously ours is flexible, but. And, and put it together faster for you to take advantage of getting this pro, I mean, you said you've already spoken to this individual and they.
To one, yeah.
And, and kind of started working on some thoughts and ideas, but.
Right, we, and the contract is in front of us, we do have it, he does, he's ready to do the work, we'd like to see him get started and we have to worry about that whole grant cycle.
Yeah.
Process, which is kind of a, you know, some people, we've missed the fall grant cycle, because those applications already do.
Yeah.
So that's kind of troublesome to us, because we really want to go, he really wants to do the work and sees a lot of great possibilities, we just have to put the funds together.
Some of those are letter of intent and then an applicant, I mean, that, that, some of that is.
That's what I just think, as far as putting in that the dollars will be there as one, yeah, then that gives you the momentum to, I guess, to me, to go forward with it and do it sooner than later, and some may have different cycles, but they'll fall in place or else we can.
What is the call, what's, what's the payment breakdown, I mean, typically you don't drop the full 125 on the front end, you'd.
Right, he's very flexible, he has proposed different ways to do it, right now, we have an in front of us, he'd get paid at the end through the proceeds of things he's going to do. I don't think that's, business-wise, business-wise for us, that's great, but, but business-wise for him, not as advantageous. I, I would, as a business, you know, former banker, I would rather see him get it in stages, he would not get it upfront. But as he does the work, do it in stages would be probably most beneficial to him, um, again, we have to look out for ourselves, he will do it at the end. But then we have, if you're applying for grants to pay for it, you, you run into the risk of doing the work and that, that doesn't work for some grants, you can't start the, the work until they give you the money. So there are a lot of things to work through on it, um, you know, I would like to see you give, this is just me, give us some money to say, hey, here's your first seed money, that kind of gets others to throw in. But that's also up to you and getting, getting those businesses together, that's gonna take some time, um, to do that. And, and especially with the fair and we're very short-staffed right now, it's just hard to find people, uh, so we're very short-staffed right now. So this wouldn't happen like tomorrow, I mean, I have the state fair looming in front of me too, there's fairs going on, there's a lot of stuff going on, but that's just me, those are just my two cents and you, you do what you want, but those are my thoughts.
That's what I support too, my only co, my only question is the amount.
I, I'd like to see the county commit 50,000 to this area to, to jumpstart this process and get it going and to, uh, help, help you leverage that for support for, for foundations.
I'll second that.
I have 25 kind of in my head as a, I'd like to see others at the table, I mean, I'd like to see everybody step up, I just think it, it's something that's good for the community when we all do too, not just a few, but. Thoughts, comments, Tom?
No, I think, you know, if you're looking at economic, um, development, I mean, it's right there, they bring people in and everything, so I think it's a great thing to get them back on sound ground again.
50,000 sound good to you?
Yes, I could live with that.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was probably at 25 initially, I think, if, knowing that that study's at 125, that probably changes where my initial calculations were, so 50 gets us a little above a third. Um, I think it's about 40,000, so, um, it gets us a little bu, a little bit above that, but I think it is a good signal to those foundations that if, if you can get this group in agreement at 50.
And, and, yeah, for sure, like I said, hopefully then that other is easy and put it to get in place, easier, but yeah.
So it sounds like there was a motion in the second there.
Yeah, uh, Karen, roll call vote, please.
This was for the 50,000.
Fifty, for the study.
Motion, got it, uh, Leland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Traka?
Yes. Do we need any more discussion at this time about the National Cattle Congress, I don't think we do?
No, I was gonna say, quick.
We're making you show nervous.
It can be nervous, that's great.
All right, we will move on to the hearing, it is now 10:51, is this billable time?
Mr. Gollmeyer's left, haven't we?
He was here, he was here, I know.
He, and, uh, Mr. Gollmeyer had another meeting.
Yeah.
That he had to attend, so he did depart, but he was here. Uh, and this is in regard to the proposed ordinance number 77-288, the Gollmeyer rezone, I will make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing.
Vote.
All was in favor? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. I will make a motion to wait the first reading as the notice was published on July 27, 2024 in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier in accordance with requirements of Code of Iowa. And publication was approved on the request submitted by Jerry Gollmeyer to rezone 1.5 acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to allow for the construction of a new single family home located south of Kane Creek, Crane Creek Road.
Did you make the motion?
I did make a motion, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Now we have the motion to close the hearing after we receive oral and or written comments and they were placed on, and they will be placed on file. I will make that motion.
Second.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, board. Lexi Schneider, planner. As you mentioned before, the applicant wishes to rezone the 1.5 acres from A to AR in order to construct a new single family home. The site has a land evaluation score of 33 and a lease score of 200 indicating moderate agricultural value. The proposed location of the home is not in farm production and the applicant plans to leave the back half of the lot in prairie pollinator habitat for wildlife and as water filtration. The site does contain a solar ray and building on the property for the proposed rezone. The applicant is planning to make property line adjustments through a survey at a future date, and the properties are both currently owned by the applicant. At their regular meeting on July 16, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a 5-1 vote with AG voting no. Are there any questions?
I see that the creek is dammed. Is that a controllable dam, do you know?
I am not sure.
Okay, I'm just curious. Okay, there's the flood. All right. That helps. Thank you. Lexi, been waiting a long time to give your presentation.
Yeah, thanks for sticking with us. And you said there was one no? And you said there was one no? And who was that?
AG, Karen AG.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Do we have any oral or written comments?
No.
All right. A motion has been made. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. I will make a, a motion to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors.
Don't move.
To consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance and that the ordinance amending ordinance number 36 has amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2, 1999 by adding subsection 288 to section six, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described in the above request submitted by Jerry Gollmeyer and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as the ordinance number 77-288.
So moved.
Second. Your second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Hall?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
Didn't hear you.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Okay. Item number 11, any reports or information from the board?
Yeah, I've got one thing. I was notified this morning that the siren out at Hickory Hills is in the process of being put up today.
Thanks. We have two candidates for conservation and Adam's last meeting is August, so we probably should interview those two. I thought maybe.
I'd go on.
Okay, like after next Tuesday's meeting would be good. If that worked for you and tag on to the board meeting then. Okay.
Pretty sure.
All right. And just to follow up on the mayor shares in the libraries, I called him yesterday and then sent him the documents that we had been provided by Michelle showing the calculations and that type of thing. After he was going to read them and talk with the librarians and then get back to us.
Okay.
Is that Dunkardin?
Yes.
Chris, anything?
Uh, not today. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? No, we are adjourned. I'm not voting though.